Welcome to the Hamilton County Commission Board Meeting, June 6, 2024. I ask everybody to introduce themselves.
Kristy Richel, Assistant Clerk.
Horn?
Stephanie Summer Odumus, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, President's Office.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission President Alicia Reese. We start every meeting with a silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join us. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Odumus?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we'll open up, we have several comments and a couple of public hearings as well. So, okay, none of these are on the public here. All right, so our first speaker, Rosalynn Foltz.
Thank you President Reese and Commission members Dreehouse and Summer Odumus for their opportunity to speak today in support of Sarah Wolf and the Hamilton County Homeowners Association. I'm a member of the association and we're actively engaged in efforts to make Hamilton County property tax system fair for all homeowners. I'm particularly concerned from a policy standpoint about taxation, which seems to me to be onerous and arbitrary in its application to all homeowners irrespective of race. Thank you President Reese for your historic efforts to assist small businesses because homeownership can be both a vehicle for startups and a result of small business profitability. However, in my opinion, the current property tax system is assaulting the establishment and maintenance of intergenerational wealth, especially for black Americans. If the property taxes are too high, seniors on fixed income are placed under enormous pressure despite the existence of government incentive programs which themselves have limitations. And frankly, under a fair tax system, homeowners would not have to rely on incentives. Coming before you today is particularly poignant as my late father, Roscoe Foltz, was a World War II veteran. He was part of the D-Day landing, which is being commemorated today. His military and lifelong efforts to win the NAACP's Double V Campaign, Victory Against Racism and Antisemitism, abroad and at home guided his life during and after the war. Homeownership was made more difficult for black GIs returning from World War II. The difficulty was not due to property taxes, it was the discriminatory administration of the GI Bill of Rights and the additional burden of corrupt real estate practices among the barriers that they faced in the Jim Crow era. Today's public officials must not be complicit in erasing their sacrifices for their country and their families by robbing their children and grandchildren of the benefits of economic prosperity and social mobility that comes from homeownership and a property tax system which is reasonable and fair and equitable to all. And in my opinion, at this time, we don't have that.
Thank you. Richard Pope?
Yes, thank you for this time and to give me something that I could express to commissioners in this body. I was homeless for at least three to four years here in Cincinnati. I bought my house when I was living at the Recovery Hotel. I had about 20 months clean off of drugs and alcohol at the time. And I bought the house, I moved away from Recovery Hotel. Today, on the 24th of last month, I celebrated 20 years and seven months clean off drugs and alcohol. Needless to say, two months before that, I get the letter saying that my mortgage went up $144 after I got it down to a reasonable amount to pay my mortgage every month. So when I went to the hearing a few weeks ago, I pointed out the fact that I didn't make any improvements on my house, I mean, to make it worth as what it is now. I was told improvements don't mean improvements. And that confused me because it went up $85,000 of improvements in three years from where it was at. And I'm like, wait a minute, none of this is making any sense. If I were to sell my house, I live in a food desert, there's no grocery stores, they closed Krogers at McHenry and Harrison years ago. They tried to open up two other places and they're closed. I'm lucky enough that I work for Court Clinic around the corner where I can afford gas in my car and go get something to eat. I couldn't sell my house to anybody that doesn't have ways to go get food. I couldn't sell my house to anybody that has kids. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Kimberly Henson?
Hi, my husband and I bought our house in Westwood 10 years ago. And one of the reasons we moved to Westwood was to escape the property taxes in Pleasant Ridge where we used to live. So we bought a house that we could afford. Our taxes have nearly doubled in the 10 years. We are both retired. We don't have extra ways to make money if property taxes have gone up. And the only improvement we have made in our home was to replace an air conditioner. There are lots of things on the table that need to be improved. But with taxes going up, that eats into our ability to maintain and improve our home. And in the long run, if our home isn't maintained, I'm just one person. So many of my friends' taxes have doubled or tripled. If you're on a fixed income, you can't afford that, what are you supposed to do? So we sell our house and go to someplace that is even more rundown? Or then we become homeless because we can't afford to pay property taxes that are unjust, unfair, and unreasonable? I'd appreciate it if you find some other way to raise money than on the backs of people who have worked hard all their lives and bought a home and now can't afford to stay there.
Janine Ringelman? If I said please say her correct, oh.
Ringelman, you know me, yeah. Hi, I voted for every tax levy all my life and I still will vote for tax levies. But it doesn't make any sense to me that the tax levies were based on the old value of our houses. Mine has doubled, a lot of people I know, my son's is way more than doubled. And so those tax levies seem to be completely irrational now. It seems like it should go back to where they're getting what they need, but we're not, our increase isn't quite what it is. They're saying that it's 28% average increase in the house value and 14% increase in the tax. And mine was increased by 100% value and 100% tax. That doesn't make any sense. If they took mine down to those, I'd be thrilled with it. But it seems like there should be a cap on the amount that they're charging us because, you know, those of us who, I was 31 years old, I was married when I moved into my house, I couldn't buy it now, I couldn't afford it in a million years now. And yet, after the homeowner's exemption, which went down instead of up, and that needs to change too, after that, my outgo is three times what it was last year. It just doesn't make any sense. I mean, it's like you don't want stable neighborhoods. You want, I mean, a lot of these people are from Westwood like I am. And there are a lot of old folks in my neighborhood and single women who this is a real burden for. And I don't know how much you can do about it, but maybe they say you can do something about the tax levy part, so thanks, I hope you will.
Susan? Is it Nagler? I'm trying to read the. Oh, that's R.K. Nagler, sorry.
Well, y'all, dido Kimber, dido everybody else. I bought a house 30 years ago for $37,000. Now they say it's $117,000 house. I've lived there, I've taken care of it, I've had my grandsons live there. And now I get a good thing in the mail, that was my first alert. My mortgage went up to $640 a month, which isn't much to people who have lots of money. I make $16,000 a year. So that breaks down to where, now it went from 470, which was troublesome enough, to 640. I have to come up with $170 more a month. Luckily, I have to work for the election board and Camden County will be paying me back $400 this year for working to elections, so we just trade that money back and forth. But that was just a lucky, next year it won't be like that. But I'm not sure how much, you know, I will be 80 in August. And I really expected to be able to enjoy my yard and my house that I love. It's a Sears house, it's adorable. It's old, it's a 100-year-old house, just a little older than I am. So I'd like to stay there. So somehow, it doesn't seem like it's a problem to like figure out what's, it's almost like there's a decimal point wrong in your system, to tell me the truth. I went from $500 to $1,500 a year, like just like that. Anyway, thank you.
Nancy Ent? Ms. Ent?
Like the other, thank you for hearing us. Like the rest of them, my house went up, I bought my house for 53,092, and now it's somehow managed to morph into 227. I don't know who figured that out, but, you know, I thought I would grow old in this house and that was my plan. I had a long plan, I've been there 32 years. And I'm, it's not happening. I can't afford it, I'm retired now after god knows how many years of work. And I worked hard. And there's a song about that, I worked hard for the money. But this is not right in any way, shape, or form to do this to people who are on a fixed income. I know you've heard it, but I hope to goodness that you can do something about this. I'm all for neighborhood improvements, but they've improved me out of my house. So, thank you.
Sarah Wolf?
Homeowners tend not to be take-to-the-street rabble-rousers, but we do vote and we are uniting. We have choices this November, but here's what you need to do if you want our votes. Look at our dataset of some 30,000 low-to-moderate-income homeowners who received the most egregious tax increases up to 400%. People have more in their escrow accounts than the amount of their mortgage, and that's insane. Proactively open up BOR hearings for these homeowners and get them down to that elusive 10% Jill Schiller keeps spouting. Hers went up zero, by the way. We've seen your budget, $1.32 billion in residential taxes alone, the receipts are $2.04 billion. Give it back, it's theft of equity. And this dataset could be used as a mailing list for a class-action lawsuit. Reduce the levies to the 2022 amounts or you'll get no levies this fall when we vote them all down and renters are in on this with us. According to the Visions contract, Section 5, Visions is contractually obligated to explain all their all-over-the-place assessment numbers to homeowners. The auditor has refused our requests for the Visions data, go talk to them and get it for us, I'll send you the contract. There's more, including our proposed state legislation and stadium sales tax reduction. Check your email, meet with us. If we aren't worth talking to for more than two minutes each, we have nothing to lose by taking our votes elsewhere. Party loyalty disappears when we can't pay our bills or spend on our kids. And don't hide behind state law like you did last time we were here. We've been reading state law and case law. The higher courts are full of cases brought by ordinary people against the government entities who have cried state law to justify government overreach, and the people win, twizm. Sheetz case recently, the list goes on. Do right by the people and remember who you work for, God bless you.
Thank you, I think those are the only speakers that we have that conclude the speakers on that particular subject matter. I'll open up Vice President Dreehouse, anything you want to say?
Thank you for coming in, you know, we've already expressed our opinion and our frustration, as you have, related to the increase in property taxes. And so we will continue, I mean, I personally will continue to study the issue and work with the legislators to try to come up with some solutions.
Commissioner Odumus?
Thank you, thank you for coming in and voicing your concerns. Jeff, I was wondering if we could possibly talk about the resources that are available for people that are here that they may not be aware of, what we've spent so far to deal with these property taxes and assessments. And I don't know if you have that in front of you, but people need to know where they can go for help.
Yeah, Commissioner, I don't have it in front of me, I assume you're talking about the, we actually went through this a little bit on Tuesday in our staff meeting.
Same here, yeah.
All the resources that are available from a homeowner perspective. Some of those resources which are available specifically to deal with assistance on mortgage, utility, and property taxes. In fact, I think the board today is going to take some action to resupplement one of the programs for mortgage, property tax assistance, and utility assistance. Since I don't have all the information with me today, I will say that to the folks that are here or to anybody who's watching that 513relief.org, if you go to that website, includes all of those resources. And there's a ton of different things depending upon whether you're talking about home repairs, utility assistance, et cetera. But the county's mortgage, property tax, and utility assistance is on that same page. So that's probably the best way to get to that. You can call 211, but 513relief.org is probably the easiest.
And as you were saying, Jeff, we have a by leave, a by leave too, I think it is. And we have so much money to spend, buy 2024 ARPA money. And there was money left over and we decided to, we're going to decide to delegate it to help, more help for mortgage. Okay, thanks.
I just wanted to thank everyone who came down, came back down again, those who were able to make it, a lot of homeowners can't make it down here. And I do interact with a lot of them. I have a grave concern, obviously this month is another payment due. And one of the things that, a number of things, but one of the things I was concerned about is people had agreements with payment plans. And they had, you know, scuffled up the money to make that payment. And then at the last minute, because of the reevaluations, they said, well, this ain't the agreement, now you owe more. And I was trying to figure out if, is there, I don't know if it's state law preventing or not, but why can't the payment plan, if they pay that payment that they agreed to, and then on, then they have to have a new payment, a new agreement, but not penalize them because you gave them agreement three months ago or whatever, and they're ready to pay? That's one of the questions I'm getting from a lot of people as well, that they had the money to pay their payment plan on the particular date, but then they felt the rug was yanked up under them because then they said, well, no, even though we had a signed agreement, you have to pay more now. And if you don't, then your property go in the foreclosure. So I'd ask, I'd ask Mr. Aludo to, even though we don't manage that, to look into, is that an opportunity to help with that? The other thing is, we also get, how we fund the land bank, and I'm not saying this is a lifetime solution, but it could be a solution until the state house, they got a number of bills, but takes a lot of time. Well, they're trying to get it together, making sure, trying to stabilize so people don't lose the homes they already have. I wanted to also ask about the late payment percentage. And if there could be an amnesty or waived for amount of time as they're trying to get this straightened out. So those are some of the things I asked, Mr. Aludo's looking into to also get back with us. There are a number of other things that was brought up today in the hearing, I'd like to get some answer to those in terms of what might, what we are able to do and what we're not able to do. For me, I do think we can't take the state out of it. The state puts, because we've been at the state, state puts laws up and then give these mandates and then sends you back to the county, and then you go to the county, you say, can you go to the prosecutor's office to get opinion? Then they say, you can't do this or you can't do that. So I'm trying to get down to the nitty-gritty. But one thing, I had asked the governor in my state of the county, and I'm still waiting on a response, to intervene. They called a special session to deal with, you know, who's going to get on the ballot, and that's great. But I would have loved to have a special session to have dealt with these property taxes that are right now. So he appoints the tax commissioner, can he intervene? And we're still waiting to hear that. But there were some other things they brought up, I'd like to get the answers maybe from our legal prosecutors. Because I'm not going to speak for everybody, everybody can speak for themselves. But, I mean, I'm committed to everything we can do because, you know, there's some very horror stories. People were coming up here crying and seeing citizens losing their house and it just, we just, we just got to do everything, every single thing that we can do. We try to do, we, as a board, I know the zoo came and they wanted a very big increase on the ballot. And we said no. But we still got to have more to do. I still believe that 30% with the property tax on the portion, our portion, that we promised the voters, but that happens in November. We vote on that in November. And it vote on it every single year. And so I think that, you know, that's, might be, you know, that's something. We just got to figure out how to get this under control. But we can't do it by ourselves. But we need to look at everything we can do. In the short term, we took some money from ARPA, originally $5 million, then $700,000, today another $300,000, so I think it'll be close to $6 million. We've helped about 1,400, 1,500 homeowners, but just, it's a lot to do. It's a lot to do.
We had one other thing that we've done that hasn't been discussed, and a lot of you talked about how your property values have increased and so, of course, the border revisions process is in place for those kind of disputes. And we recognize, we recognize that not every individual has the resources to get their own appraisal. And so we have allocated dollars through legal aid for free appraisals for individuals that are going through the process. I just want to offer that, I know we've talked about that before, but legal aid is there to represent and the appraisal money is also available for that purpose if people are working through the BOR process.
We need to get an update from BOR, maybe we could put that on somehow the agenda and find out what's going on. Okay, I'm sorry, you can't talk out, I'm so sorry, I apologize. Okay, we got to move on to the next speakers. Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much. Can I speak out on here? But let's, thank you. Thank you all very much. Okay, next we have speakers on animal shelter, Greg Harris.
As a resident of Hamilton County who is also a dog lover, I've been adopting pets locally for the past two decades. This includes my current rescue dogs, Buster and Griffey, of course the latter named after Red's great Ken Griffey Jr. I want to thank the commission for making an excellent choice four years ago in selecting Cincinnati Animal Care as Hamilton County's animal shelter. I urge you to renew their contract. As someone who worked in the nonprofit sector for over two decades, I am especially impressed by CAC's financial stewardship. It set the gold standard when it comes to leveraging funds from multiple sources for optimal impact. CAC's fundraising program has grown each year, now raising around $900,000 annually through grants, sponsorships, and direct contributions. CAC has also implemented a massive foster program. At present, 1,800 volunteers foster animals throughout Hamilton County. In addition, they have a network of 1,200 volunteers who support the work of Hamilton County Shelter. Their vast volunteer network represents the equivalent of hundreds of thousands of dollars annually in in-kind support. This is why CAC, which has taken in 1,200 animals over the past 12 months, has achieved a 94% release rate despite the challenges of an aging shelter. CAC's exemplary leveraging of funds and volunteers is why Hamilton County is now home to one of the nation's most effective no-kill animal shelters in the nation. They have proven their value to Hamilton County taxpayers and are just getting started. Thank you.
Thank you, stick around, we have something on there for the animal shelter, dog warden piece too, you might be interested. Rick Baron?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today regarding my support for Cincinnati Animal Care's continued role as your animal control and shelter operations partner. My name is Rick Baron and I've been an active advocate and supporter for improving both services in our community for over 12 years. In 2017, I was thrilled to see Cincinnati Animal Care's leaders were selected to provide shelter and animal control services in Claremont County, doing so through 2020. Despite a meager budget and a rural mentality, this brand-new organization accomplished far more than ever imagined, elevating us to one of the safest communities anywhere in the country for lost and homeless pets. I was then ecstatic in 2020 when your office selected these same leaders to displace the SPCA. Others are here to speak to you about Cincinnati Animal Care's accomplishments. My only addition for you is to note that this was done in a facility that's inadequate for today's animal volume or services with total visibility to cost and outcome. Imagine what they can achieve with a long-term contract in a facility designed to deliver the desired services. Since the Claremont County Commissioners took over animal control and shelter services in 2020, we've seen the termination of virtually every one of the programs residents and their companion animals have enjoyed, with restrictive hours of operation at three times the cost proposed in the RFP rejected by the commissioners. I ask that you learn from the mistake made by the Claremont County Commissioners and provide Cincinnati Animal Care with another 10 years to demonstrate what can be achieved when a community makes a long-term commitment to life-saving. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stay tuned, we've got a lot of stuff coming. While you're here, though, something I think, we've got two by leaves if my colleagues will be okay with passing, showing commitment. We have an appointment of the county dog warden on by leave number five. And we also have by leave number four, declaring a dog license amnesty period that the Cinnabie Dog Ward presented to us with the organization. So with that, I'd like to open up if anybody wants to make comments before I, Mr. Aludo, you want to say something about this?
No, only if you'd like me just to, I can just walk through the resolutions very quickly?
Yes.
So by leave number four, this is declaring dog license amnesty period from June 24 through July 3, 2024. We had this conversation a bit on staff meeting on Tuesday. The, this has been put together by the Budget Office. The salient portion of the resolution indicates that the board is authorizing all vendors in Hamilton County to sell penalty-free dog licenses through the county auditor and all authorized vendors during the time period, June 24 through June, I'm sorry, yeah, June 24 through July 3, 2024. And as we heard in staff meeting on Tuesday, we know that this is important from a timing perspective, given the summer months, thunderstorms, and fireworks, and the impact that can have on animals and their propensity to leave and run free, et cetera. So with that, I'd recommend passage of by leave number four.
Open it up, anything, Vice President Dreehouse?
My mic is off. I think it's a great idea, so happy to support by leave number four.
Commissioner Odumus?
Not only are we talking about licensing, but we're also talking about the chips for the animals, I think that's great.
Awesome, and thank you. And in passing this, we'll be able to get moving before 4th of July, which is important. Make a motion to approve by leave four.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Odumus?
Yes.
We need somebody to implement it, so this is by leave five.
Commissioner by leave five, and John, I don't know if you'd like to walk us through by leave five? Um, John has pulled together both of these resolutions. I know he's been, uh, working with Beth, and she's come on board and as our, um, liaison to, uh, animal care and the dog warden function. So, John?
Right, and as Beth, as Beth, who was here on Tuesday, mentioned, she's been serving in interim capacity since February, and we wanted to just, with this resolution, officially acknowledge her appointment as the dog warden, um, in the county, which we had not done at the, up to this point. So.
Vice President Drehouse? Um, again, um, I don't, I can't see Beth because of the, there you are, because of the podium.
Please step up to the podium so everybody can see her.
It's just the thing about sitting in the seat.
I'm just hiding.
Can't see half the room over there. Um, so thank you for the presentation on Tuesday. It's nice to meet you, uh, and I am, uh, excited to have you on board. I know that you are reaching out to each of our offices to make sure that you've got contact information from us, and we've got contact information from you. We hear a lot about dogs, uh, as county commissioners, and so really excited that you're coming on board, and I really respect your, the proactive nature of how you are approaching the job. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
I would say the same thing. I think your presentation was just awesome, and you represent your staff and the dogs and cats very well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Ditto to the presentation, and then obviously your background, uh, when you're talking about coming from the West Coast and some of the different ideas that they've had, and you're bringing those, uh, great ideas to Hamilton County, and so we appreciate it. So it's time to make you official. Um, I make a motion to approve by leave number five.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and I, I want to extend my thanks from my team. They all would have been here except, uh, we had a massive, uh, hoarding type house that, uh, we had been working on for a while, and we finally got access to it this morning. So they're all hard at work right now, but, uh, but thank you on their behalf as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much to the speakers. Stay tuned. Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, we have one other speaker, then we've got a public hearing. We're running a little bit behind. Uh, this is, wait a minute. This is for the speaker, oh, I mean, it's for the public hearing. Okay. All right, we're going into our public hearing. Um, first public hearing is on the proposed vacation of an unnamed 16-foot alley behind 9959 Lincoln Road in Camp Denison, Sims Township. Mr. Engineer, welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Um, a- as you stated, this is for the vacation of an unnamed 16-foot alley at, uh, behind 9959 Lincoln Road at Camp Denison, Sims Township. Um, petition was sent to the board back in November of last year. Viewing date was May 9th of this year. Um, the petitioner has prepared and submitted the survey plat, um, and to the county engineer. We've evaluated it, sent it to the utility companies for comments. Um, any conditions that the utilities had or the engineer's office had have been met. This is an opportunity for the public to, uh, speak either for or against this vacation.
Okay. All right, we do have a speaker. Anne? Oh, only if there's questions. Okay. All right. Is anybody else to speak on this? Going once, going twice? Okay, I make a motion to, uh, oh, sorry, open it up.
Can I just ask the question? Are you, uh, in favor of this? Okay, I just.
They, they are the petitioners.
Assumed as much, but I just wanted to check, because there are four of you sitting in the row.
Four properties. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, they're one of the petitioners.
And I was going to ask if, um, what you've heard by way of public input?
We have heard no, nothing back from anybody, any complaints. This was a, a lane or a private alley that was part of a subdivision in back of these houses, so it was just, it extends back to the back of this subdivision. So we've heard no complaints from any of the other adjoining property owners.
Thank you.
And that will be in my report on the regular item.
Thank you all for being here.
Okay. Uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Dumas, did you have any questions? Okay, I make a motion to close, uh, this hearing, um, on this particular subject matter.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, next hearing, hearing for the consideration of projects recommended for funding for the 2024 municipal road fund.
Thank you. Um, as we do annually, we, uh, distribute the, uh, permissive auto tax funds per Ohio Revised Code 450405 to municipalities. In 2023, the, uh, revenue was 2.44 million. Uh, our recommended award amount for this year is 2.346 million, just a little bit under what we've taken in. We had 14 projects submitted by municipalities, and, um, we are recommending, uh, 11 of those get funded. They are, um, number one is City of Cincinnati for Bridge Maintenance, that's $1 million. Number two is Cleaves, Miami View Road, 87,500. Norwood Montgomery Road, 190,000. Silverton Plainfield Road, 150,000. Cincinnati Beekman Avenue, 200,000. Wyoming Mount Pleasant Avenue, 150,000. Merrymont Pocahontas Drive, 16,500. Green Hills Damon Road, 70,000. Addiston First Street, 157,87. Springdale Crescentville Road, 150,468. And Little Dry Run Road in Newtown for 175,000. Um, there were three projects that were submitted that did not get approved. The total ask on those three projects was over $4 million, so we obviously didn't have enough money to, to fund any further down with the, the little bit that remained in the, the overage. So, um, my recommendation is that we, uh, approve those 11 projects for municipal road funds this year.
Okay. Uh, we've got a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on that subject matter? Going once, going twice? Vice President Drehouse, anything?
Yeah, just a quick question. Um, so the municipal road fund, yeah, I, this is a fund that is, um, intended to do all this work throughout the county, um, and you said it was, uh, just a little bit less this year. Is this fund one that increases, decreases, or remains the same?
It is based on the tax revenue, so it kind of goes up. It has gone up a little bit in the last few years, uh, based on the license plate fees. So we do, it does fluctuate, and, uh, we try to put out as much as we receive, depending on how the projects line up.
Okay, so, so the number of projects is relative to the amount of money that's.
That is correct.
Literally the amount of money is.
That is correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. I appreciate the diversity of your projects. We've talked a long time, and I don't know, maybe you've been doing it before, but to me, it just seems like we're just spreading all over the place, and I'd certainly appreciate that. And then you said there were three projects that were not approved, you didn't have enough money, but they can always reapply.
Absolutely, they can reapply every year.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Awesome. I make a motion to come out of public hearing on this item.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Okay, we've got a third public hearing on the establishment of the Fields-Erdo Road Intersection Improvements at McCauley and Conroy Roads.
Yes, this is, uh, a continuation of the hearing that was held, uh, I believe it was two weeks ago. Um, I was not here, so I'm going to let Todd Long handle this. I know there was some questions by the board, and he will provide answers to those.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, as Eric stated, we did have a, a hearing for this, the presentation of which was, was given, give the scope of the overall project and define, uh, the, the need for the project itself. There were a number of different residents that we were able to meet with after the, uh, hearing, uh, to directly, um, ascertain the concerns that they had for the projects. Um, I personally met with, um, Mrs. Ferris and her daughter, who had some concerns. They were the, they were the one, um, particular individual who did speak at the, at the, at the meeting, and the, the prominent concern that she had centered around the ability for, uh, emergency services to be able to make it to her home throughout the entirety of construction. So we shared all the details of what that would entail and talked to both she and her daughter about that. They both felt good about the, the process that we would have to be putting in place and recognizing that the, uh, the emergency services would have access to her property at all times. There were additionally, um, several other concerns, some other citizens that, uh, that came to us, uh, the, the Hendersons, um, and the Martins. And there was an additional, uh, request made, um, for information that we did send to the Commissioners regarding the, uh, the Sharonville Fire Department and their, and their information. Uh, they are in support of the project, and they believe that the, uh, and we, we pass this information along to each of the Commissioners as well. So we believe that we've addressed adequately the concerns that were brought forth, um, by talking to each of the individuals to give them a very specific understanding of, of their part to what we might not have been seeing, and we'd like to be able to, um, move forward with our hearing if we can today. I'll be happy to answer questions if you have them more specifically about any of the items that I've talked about.
Okay. Anybody here to talk on that has any questions before we go to the Commissioners? Going once, going twice? Okay, Vice President Drehouse?
Thank you, Todd, for following up with the individuals that had questions at the last hearing. I really appreciate that, uh, and knowing that you've satisfactorily answered those questions, um, I'm willing to move forward with this item.
Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you so much, uh, Todd, for getting back with us and that additional information, that big spreadsheet. It was really helpful for me to see this is one project we're talking about, and so you guys do a lot of great work, so, and he represents you well when you're not here. So thank you so much for that additional information.
Appreciate that.
Thank you very much. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioners, I don't know if you want, like to, at this point in time, if it might be appropriate to advance by leave number one, which I think is the, uh, resolution associated with this particular hearing, so. Is that, is that correct? The resolution one is, is, uh, connected to the hearing here, so, uh, it might just make sense to advance that.
Correct, yeah, but, yes, by leave one is just the, uh, resolution, uh, closing the hearing and approving the establishment.
I'm opening up, Vice President Drehouse, any questions? Commissioner Dumas, any questions? Uh, I make a motion to approve I, by lea, I mean, sorry, item number one.
By leave one.
Oh, by leave one, I'm sorry. By leave number.
By leave one, second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Okay, why the, I just, if you, if you all don't mind, since Engineer's right here, I wouldn't mind advancing, um, items one through four, so you don't have to sit down and then come back up.
I'd be glad to do that.
Yeah, Mr. Engineer. We're engineering everything, right?
I like that.
Eric, can I ask you a question?
You sure can.
Are there members of your team here?
Uh, yes, there are. There are several members of my team here.
Yeah, I recognize some of the faces in the room. I just wanted to.
Not sure who all's back here. Um, we have Jacob Verst, who is our drainage engineer. Jacob, if you'd stand up.
Hi.
And we have.
Jacob, you gotta come up, y'all have to come up here.
I can't see who they are.
People want to see you. We're, you're gonna make YouTube famous.
All right, nice to meet you all.
Jake, Jake handles all of our drainage issues. He's one of our young engineers here, and if you'd introduce your two, uh, co-ops.
Yeah.
Jake also runs our co-op program.
Co-ops, y'all, come on over, so we can see you.
You're on television.
We like that.
Yeah, we have four co-ops working with us, uh, right now in the summer. We have Ethan Campbell, who goes to the University of Cincinnati, and then we have Kaden Bardon. Bardon, Bardon, sorry, who goes to Ohio State.
The Ohio State, you're supposed to say. Well, welcome. We, we like that co-op, we like that, yes. Awesome. Well, thank you, nice meeting you.
Yeah, nice to meet you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Vice President Drehouse.
Yes, thank, thank you for mentioning that, and we have had our co-op program for about two years now, and Jake started that, uh, shortly after he joined our office, and it's been a tremendous asset.
Awesome.
It's really great working with these young engineers who have a totally different outlook on things, and it, it helps us keep our viewpoint fresh.
Yeah.
And I, I really appreciate them.
Awesome.
And I, I won't, I would like to start today with, with just a comment. I'd rec, like to recognize this is the 80th anniversary of D-Day, and I'd like to thank all of those who gave their all, protect us. I was fortunate enough to be at Omaha Beach in the cemetery a week ago today, and it was very humbling, and I appreciate everything that they had done for us, so.
Yes.
Item number one is just the engineer's report for the vacation of the unnamed 16-foot alley behind, uh, Lincoln Road. Um, it's a report to the board that, uh, all things are acceptable with that. Um, item number two is a resolution awarding a contract to lowest and best bidder, John R. Jurgensen Company, uh, for Springdale Road improvements, uh, located in Colrain Township. The bids were opened on, uh, April 11th. John R. Jurgensen was low at 1,409, 400, 149,742.75, 15% below, 15% below the engineer's estimate. Uh, this funding is 90% Sorda and 10% permissive auto funds with a completion date of October of this year. Item number three and item number four are both related to each other. Item three is a resolution, uh, approving a consulting agreement with Martin and Wood Appraisal Group for the appraisal, property appraisal review services for the Fields-Erdo Road Intersection Improvements, McCauley and Conroy project that we, uh, just did the establishment on. This agreement is for $34,675, and that will come out of permissive auto funds. And resolution number, uh, number, item number four is a resolution approving a consultant agreement with Dunrobin Associates for appraisal services, again, on Fields-Erdo Road, uh, for $169,315 out of permissive auto. The way this works, it has federal funding in it, so we have to follow all the federal processes. So Dunrobin will be the firm doing the appraisals, and part of the process is we have to have an independent appraiser review those, and that's what Martin and Wood will be doing. So there's, there are two contracts for two different appraisers. Basically, one will do the appraisals and the other will review them.
Hey, open it up, Vice President Drehouse? Any questions? Commissioner Dumas?
No questions.
Okay, I make a motion to approve items one through four.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I'll see. Getting back to the calendar, uh, open it up for comments and resolutions. Uh, Vice President Drehouse, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, she's, Amari, I can't see you past this podium, but, um, I did, my first item is that Amari Davis, who has been my intern for, it seems like a long time, Amari, I know it's been just months, but, um, she, this is her last day, so I did want to recognize, thank you for, for lending your talents and treasures to the county, uh, to my office in particular, and all the best of luck, um, as you move through the summer and back into the school year eventually, so really appreciate all that you've done. Yeah, Amari, you've been great.
Thank you.
Can we say something now?
Sure.
Just would say, it was great having you around. You were sitting over there, and you just introduced her yesterday.
I know.
And now you're over here, and you're like, this is my last day. Well, we're so glad that you, uh, came and interned and, um, was with the Hamilton County family, so just best of, best of luck as you're moving forward.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas, did you want to say something?
Yes, it's just, just wondering, what school are you going back to?
Um, so I just recently graduated from Xavier with my bachelor's of political science, um, so I'm interested in going to get my master's, like, administration at Ohio State. I'm staying in the Cincinnati area, because this is my new home away from home.
We got her. We got her.
We got her now, here.
Good stuff.
It's just a pleasure to have you around.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Best of luck, don't, please keep in touch with us.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Amari.
Thank you.
All right, so that was my first item. I did want to mention, you know, a number of people have mentioned the recognition of D-Day, and so I think it ties in nicely with a press conference we had a few days ago related to veterans, kind of what I called a twofer. One, talking about and promoting the free rides for veterans to doctor's appointments into the VA, and then the announcement about the event that's coming up. So I don't want to steal anybody else's thunder, but did think that there's a nice tie-in here related to veterans. It's always a good time to honor and recognize veterans. Beyond that, I just, today came from an event, the National Trails Week. Brewster Roads does this every year, and so I was down on the river for lunch today talking about the importance of trails, the waterways, the greenways, the multimodal nature of what we are moving to for recreation, but also so that people can move around to work, to other things that they need to do. So thank you, Brewster, for that invitation. I went to the Celebration of Dreams banquet last night, I think Michael Patton, yep, he's back in the back of the room. So this is the event that we hold annually in recognition of all the kids that are in the foster system that graduated from high school. And they graduated from high schools all over the county. And, you know, their stories, the video was really impressive, Michael, they told their stories about how they had gotten to where they were, and they were obviously very proud of their achievement in graduating from high school, and we got to hear about what they want to do next. So really nice event, Michael. It was a great celebration for all those young people. So thank you for doing that every year. It's really very meaningful. And then we had the Pride, we've done a lot, actually, in the last week or two. We had the raising of the Pride flag across the, well, it's actually across the street at the county, or the courthouse, but also all of our other buildings throughout the county. I want to thank Jeremy Taylor with Pride, Scott Knox, who is a stalwart in our community related to all things Pride, and then Josh Jones, who's with the Hamilton County ERG. He has just started this group, and he's really doing a fantastic job launching that. So thank you, Josh, for being there. And then Sarah Brennan, or Sarah Braun from Springfield Township, she's a trustee, and she's the one that raised the flag. So really grateful for all of them for participating. And then, just two more things, the Canoes in Conversation activity with Dave Schmidt happened, I think that was last weekend, again, raising awareness about the Mill Creek, the quality of the water there, which is improving, and then all of the recreation that's building up around the Mill Creek. It was, we had people, they had people canoeing, I was canoeing. Again, I keep, just keep going back for more on the canoe. There, people were biking and people were hiking. So it was really a fun, fun event. And then lastly, we had yesterday, the Black Music Walk of Fame event, Commissioner President Reese, it was a fun event as always, and I look forward to more to come related to the Black Music Walk of Fame. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. Just a few things. Once again, I attended the webinar for the weekly White House briefing, and we all attended the Metro Veterans Activity, where they had two huge buses wrapped for veterans to go for medical services or any other activities that they needed to attend. So we just thank Darryl Haley, he had been thinking about this, my understanding, a couple years ago, but it just got done now. And then also the One Ohio Region Two Governance Board Meeting that we had earlier this week, which is so important to allocating all this funding that's coming down for addiction response and prevention and housing and treatment. And we're on our way to try to, we've been working on it forever, even before I came, but the money is coming down, and we will be allocating money according to the applications that come in. And then last night, unfortunately, I missed Director Patton's event. I was a speaker at the Best Point Education and Behavioral Health Annual Meeting and handed out lots of awards for caseworkers and administration who are helping all those young children there. So that was just a great experience. And then I had a meeting this morning with Todd and Holly as it relates to stormwater ideas and possibly overland flooding, and how we can better handle that and partner with other communities. So, and then this morning, I went to celebrate Wawa. And then, Wawa is a Native American name for goose, and that's their mascot, and they had him there. And if you have never been to a Wawa, which is almost sort of, I don't even want to say like a Speedway, but much larger food and fuel and fresh foods, and they are going to actually build six of them in Ohio. Well, in Hamilton County, Butler County, they're going to Fairfield, there's one on Glen Springs in Springdale by 2025. This one, I went to, the groundbreaking was on Fields Erdel Deerfield Township, and it was just the greatest experience just being there. And everyone that I've talked to who's ever been to one of these in the East, they don't stop talking about how nice everybody is and the different variety of food. So it was just an awesome time to be there. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to say that I joined Vice President Treehouse at the Pride Flag Raising. We had really good weather, lot of pollen. I started thinking, I said, why is my voice like this? We were under the tree. But it was, it was great weather and really good turnout, so I just wanted to commend you on that. And also, a couple different things. Wanted to acknowledge D-Day and want to acknowledge Richard Stewart, who served, and he's from Lincoln Heights, he's 103 years old, and he was invited by a 13-year-old and her teacher, and they recommended him, and he is traveling and is gone back for the commemoration. At 103 years, I'm gonna say young. And so that was just touching for me to have someone from our county, and he served in the U.S. Army Unit Repairing Lines. So wanted to give a big shout out to him. My office will be preparing a resolution that all of us will sign to be able to give to him and thank him for his service. With that, I was happy to be at the press conference Vice President Treehouse talked about, about in Metro. Big shout out to Darryl Haley with the wrap, and as our board came up with the 20,000 to try to have no cost, and so, great job, really appreciate that. While we were there, we announced the event that we're gonna have for the first time in history, Hamilton County Appreciation, Veteran Appreciation Day, in partnership with the Veteran Services Commission. And I'd like to pull up that right here, because we have to, everything is free, but you have to RSVP. Oh, wow, I like that. Everything is free, but you have to RSVP. So we're gonna put this up here, it's gonna be Saturday, July 20th. Mr. Anson is working day and night, and the team is working on it. We're gonna have food, we're gonna have music, we're going to have, it's gonna be a party with a purpose. We're going to have all of the actionable stations, where you'll be able to go there and apply and get information about benefits, get information about what services you're supposed to be getting, sign up for transportation if you need it. 513 Relief Bus will be there with all of its services. And we've got everybody from the DAV to the veterans, the VA will be there, so federal, state, county services, and this will be the day that we are going to appreciate all who have given to our country. It's for veterans and their families and widows, come out and join us, and guess what? We have free parking at a certain garage, though, a certain one, right across the street. So everything you need to know, I know we've got the little QR code there, but if you need more information, it's available everywhere and on 513relief.org. So every veteran you know, please, 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 tell them to register. It's going to be a great red, white, and blue time, a party with a purpose of helping veterans. So wanted to put that up there, and we announced that at the press conference. In addition, in addition, make sure I got all my points here. We're a lot of different places, but I want to point out, yesterday, for the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, we had our kickoff, and this is the third year that we've been at the Hard Rock Casino, Cincinnati. I want to give a big, big, big shout out to the Hard Rock Casino, Cincinnati, for hosting this for us and with us, and we have new inductees going in. This year will be Randy Crawford, Shirley Murdoch, Donald Lawrence, Roger, the late Roger Troutman, and Zap will be going in. We also have our influencers that will be going up on our influencer screen this month, Big Rob and Tracy Artist, and Ed Wright. Ed Wright is the gentleman, I wish we would've got him last year, but he suddenly passed. He is the co-author of Black Music Month, and he's from Cincinnati, Ohio. So we wouldn't be having a Black Music Month nationally without Mr. Ed Wright. And then it went into law under President Jimmy Carter. So, and I think this is 34th year being celebrated nationally. So one, two, and he was in Billboard Magazine and everything, so it's been great. Yesterday, we had a great crowd, I want to thank everybody that came out, want to thank everybody that helped, the administration, we had folks from our administration that helped, along with our clerk and so many others. But I want to also thank P.N. Everson Price, who was emcee, I want to thank Romaine Jones and her team, JYS Media, that helped coordinate, Aziza with Cincy Black Travel that also helped, and I want to thank my chief of staff, who was running around in 15 different jobs yesterday, and really, and helping to put all of this together. And I want to thank Hard Rock Casino. Everyone that came got a surprise. I didn't even realize the surprise to the end, Mr. Ludo, but everybody that came got a surprise. They got a complimentary ticket to Boys the Men Concert. It's going to be June 22nd at the Hard Rock Casino in honor of Black Music Month. So that was a big surprise that everybody had received that came. So, yeah, so we're very excited about it, and, yeah, we'll see everybody at the one year birthday celebration, which will be July 27th. We got a lot going on in July. July 27th at 12:00 noon, and it's gonna be at the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame in the Andrew Brady Center, and Zap will be doing a tribute concert to their founder, Roger Troutman, and it's completely free, and we're asking everybody to wear their white, again, white attire if you have it, but this time, bring your dancing shoes, because it's a birthday celebration and the induction ceremony. So that's all I have for my, for my comments right now. I'll open it up to Mr. Ludo.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just briefly, before we get to the rest of the agenda, from a by leave perspective, just a couple of quick comments. Also, wanted to echo, since Michael was here, wanted to thank Michael for all the work that he and his staff did on the Celebration of Dreams yesterday, always a fantastic event. And since, I think I still see Mr. Beck over at the, yep, I do, okay. Also, just wanted to congratulate him and Deputy Engineer Todd Long on pulling off the annual meeting, annual township meeting that you guys had last week. Todd did a great job while you were visiting other places, Eric, so. Couple of by leave items, Commissioners. Let's see, we had done by leave one, we'd also had done four and five. So the first by leave we have in your packet is by leave number two, and that is the resolution amending Hamilton County's American Rescue Fund Act Funding Plan and reallocating state and local fiscal recovery funds. This is in the amount of $369,933. This is to supplement, as we have discussed, the mortgage utility property tax assistance program to keep that, to keep that program funded, especially as we are continuing to go through second, second half settlement for property taxes, et cetera. So the administration recommends approval, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, open it up for questions, Vice President Treehouse. Commissioner Dumas?
I'm just glad that we made it a priority to have that extra one brought forward. That's all.
Awesome. That's by leave number two. I'll make a motion to approve by leave number two.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
And people can go to 513relief.org to apply for these funding for property taxes as well as mortgage assistance. So that's where you go to apply. Mr. Ludo, anything else?
Yes, by leave number three is a resolution number P113-24. This authorizes an agreement with Amoresco and the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners on behalf of Stadium Parking for Energy Conservation Measures. This is part of our capital work down at Paycor Stadium. This is, as the board is aware, we have, we have a contract, have had a contract with Amoresco, which we entered into back in 2019 for a five-year agreement, and it's basically, for lack of a better terms, a master services agreement, where as we discover additional energy conservation measures that we can put in place, that we add different work to that contract. And as we've been going through the different work options and project options at Paycor, we have, our staff has determined that there are projects with energy costs, or energy, energy cost savings available at Paycor. So these are going to be projects such as lighting control system upgrades, digital control upgrades, optimization and recommissioning of various pieces of equipment, LED retrofits, LED lighting improvements on the newly expanded plaza that we're doing to make sure that the lighting out there is efficient, energy efficient, also various electric infrastructure additions in concession areas, et cetera. So the, the project itself is $7.398 million. 3.7 of that is actually out of the pre-renovation program. The remainder portion of that is out of the 24 regular CIP, and a portion of it will be funded out of the, out of next year's CIP. But in total, there's approximately $550,000 of annual energy savings that will come with this. So this is a, one of the projects at the stadium and parking staff specifically advocated for as we moved into the pre-renovation, to make sure that as we were doing all of these project, or stadium and facility improvements, that we were also doing things that also had long-term payback investment to the county. So with that, Commissioners, I do recommend approving by leave three. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I got a couple of questions. One is, when would this work begin, or?
It will begin very soon. In fact, that's why we're bringing it by leave, so that Amoresco can get in there and start doing the pre, all the pre-work for it, anticipating possibly your question, Commissioner. All of this to be done around the events that we have coming up at the stadium, so the music festival, et cetera. All of the projects down at, all of the pre-renovation projects are being done with mind towards that, so that there's no disruption during those events.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I wanted to, and I know it may not go with this particular item, but I want to, I'm still waiting, maybe you gave it to us maybe while I was out, but I want something saying, I don't want to excuse the dust, the mess during the music festival, and all of a sudden the escalators not, I mean, this usually happens a lot of times, particularly with minority conventions. We start fixing stuff, but when these folks come to town, I don't want, oh, the escalators are down, because we're upgrading. You know, I need to know that this stuff is gonna be done or either on the other side of the stadium that's not used.
That's exactly the, well, done and on the other side from a timing perspective. So I think that the team is working to make sure that projects are either done, or those that can't be completed will get basically mothballed, moved, like you said, and then completed on the other side from a timing perspective, so that there's no disruption to the stadium during those times.
Yeah, I just don't want to have people walk further to get on the elevator, or you've got, you know, that clear stuff, and you got the dust, and you got the wood, and you have, we're gonna be looking pretty next year, where these people are paying top dollar to go into this, this concert, if you will, and I just want to make sure that they shouldn't even see that we're doing construction. They should, you know.
Yes, that has absolutely been the direction. I will use this opportunity to follow up again with them.
Okay. And then we had on there, because we're spending new money, but what about these elevators? They claimed the elevators were down, remember we voted on it, and you said water was in them?
There was, that was, I think the elevator you're referring to is the elevator on, on the Plaza area?
Yeah.
Yes.
We voted on something. We already had to vote on it, because it kept water or something.
Yes, so I will follow up after this meeting and figure out where that is from a correction perspective. Yeah, that was water that had intruded into the elevator shaft and had gone down and caused a failure in the elevator. Last I checked on that, which was right around when we did that, they were supposed to have someone in very quickly after that was done, but it was weather dependent, so if they had gotten some rain right around that time, it was gonna be difficult to do the project, but I'll check and see where it is after the meeting.
Yeah, because we did an emergency, I guess, money-wise.
Yes, right, yeah.
So I would like to see it emergency fixing-wise. And then I'll just lay on you, Andrew Brady Center said they've been dealing with this, and nobody's dealt with that elevator in six, seven months, and it's been down. It's the only elevator over there from, from the garage up to that area. They use it, you know, even when you have a bench.
This would be that same elevator, so.
And you check on it, no, these two different elevators. One was in Paycor Stadium, we voted on about a couple weeks ago. You said it was hurry, it was a change order or something that we had to do.
The one I'm referring to is the water intrusion on the The one I'm referring to is the water intrusion on the, right off of the Plaza.
Yeah.
So that, so I'll follow up.
Okay, just follow up. Yeah. I just wanted to make sure because we vote on this stuff and kind of think it's been done.
Yeah, there was also a freight, there were freight elevators also that we were, we were talking about at Paycor as well. But I'll follow up on.
Yeah. All elevate, let me put, all elevators have been funded and need to be fixed immediately.
Got it.
Because we be, we keep voting on them. I'll open it up, Vice President Treehouse.
All right. Thank you. Um, thank you for this item, Jeff. I get asked a lot about what the county is doing by way of sustainability. And, you know, it doesn't always occur to people that, never mind our portfolio of buildings that we operate out of as a county, we also have the stadiums to worry about and to think about by way of opportunity for different ways to approach sustainability. So I'm, I'm intrigued by this. I was going to ask you what exactly this is, but you described it already. So encouraged that we are taking this kind of proactive look at the stadiums, just like we do with our other facilities. Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Dumas?
Just a quick question, Jeff. It says an amendment. So what was the actual cost? And then so, and what is the amendment?
Yeah, so the, it's a great, great question, Commissioner. So this is the, the cost of the project. The amendment refers to the fact that we have this agreement with Amoresco that we bid out in 2019. And as I said, it's kind of like a master services agreement. So as we come up with, say tomorrow, we could learn of an energy savings opportunity at the Justice Center. And we will do, we will do an amendment to that contract to fund those projects. So in this case, that's what the amendment refers to, is just the addition of other projects, other, other energy savings projects that we're going to implement. It is not, which is a really good question, it is not an amendment to that project. Yes.
So I would ask a question on this company. I usually research it myself. I didn't get a chance to do it. I mean, how large of a company is this?
There, there, there are various, under Ohio law, there is the ability to enter into contracts with energy service companies to do what's called energy performance contracting work. There are several entities out there that do it. Honeywell is one. I believe Siemens is one. Amoresco is one. And these are usually large design build firms that do this. We have had a contract with Amoresco. We've done this through a competitive request for a proposal process several times. And they've done, they've actually, but as Mr. Lenny was in here a couple of weeks ago talking about the energy savings improvements, I would say the vast majority of that was done through contracts with Amoresco.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And I guess on the, just piggyback what you just asked about, Commissioner Dumas. I was looking at the agreement. So the original agreement was 13,455,179. Then it says the amendment will add $7 million.
Yes. Yeah. So that, that is, again.
So it's not like, because I was thinking, when you just described it, Commissioner Dumas, it was, for example, they would have a $20 million, but they only use if we do a contract here and there. That's not what this is. We've used the 13 million and now we're adding seven.
Yeah. So we have put in, we have done various energy savings projects throughout the county totaling around 13 million in different facilities throughout the county. This is a new project totaling 7.39 million at Paycor.
Okay. And what about at, we're saying, we're trying to do it at all our stadiums. Are we doing anything over Great American or are they just?
We have done them, we have done them at Great American. And in fact, we negotiated with the Reds. We were responsible for giving them a specific dollar amount for utility savings, or for, I'm sorry, for utility costs under the lease. And we did an energy saving project where we actually negotiated a reduction in the amount that we were giving them for, for energy, for energy utility costs because of that, of that particular project in exchange for the financing that we had.
Okay, so they're already doing.
So we have done things at Great American as well.
Okay, great. Okay. No other questions? I make a motion to approve item number three. By leave number three.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. I believe that is it for the by leaves as we have tackled all the other ones previously.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go to, we have item number five.
Commissioners, if, if I could, real, real quick, and I'm sorry, Sarah, if, as Mr. Beck is still here, I think there's one other engineer item that we needed to take care of that we were going to advance to the regular agenda.
Is that item number six?
Uh, it, it is, yes.
Sorry.
Thought it was, wanted to just advance it separately as it would have been awkward for Mr. Beck to submit a resolution proposing himself to a committee. So this, this is a, and if, if I may, Commissioner.
Yes, please.
So this is an item on your agenda. This is item, it's under the consent agenda, but advancing it into the regular agenda is item number six. This is a resolution appointing representatives to the O P W C District Two Integrating Committee. So this appoints Mr. Eric Beck and Ms. Paula Lampley to the, to that particular integrating committee, which makes decisions on the funding of O P W C projects. So with that, I recommend approval.
Okay. I'll open it up. Vice President Treehouse, anything?
Happy to support this. Thanks to Paula Lampley. Never mind Eric Beck for being with you. Of course, Eric, but Paula is a volunteer. So I really appreciate her willingness to serve here.
Commissioner Dumas?
Do you feel you're qualified?
I believe I am, yes. And Jeff, I should note, there's also the alternates on that list as well. Yes, I believe Todd Long is an alternate for you, Mr. Beck. Is that correct?
Correct. It is correct.
And the alternate for Ms. Lampley is Ms. Mary Welsh.
Correct.
Thank you. Also, Ms. Welsh, Ms. Lampley, everyone who was willing to serve. I'm happy to make a motion to approve item number six.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Now back to Ms. Adams.
I moved it very low for him. I only have one item today, resolution number five. This is with the City of Norwood for 1.3 million. This is another grant under our stormwater infrastructure projects. This project will construct a new stormwater system on Elm Avenue and a new outfall. This will go behind some houses in that area of the Woodlawn Avenue and Ridgeway Avenue area. This area does have severe flooding, a lot of water in basements, roadway floods, dangerous situations for local residents, apartment complexes, and vehicle flooding. It is also a concern that a lot of the emergency vehicles when flooding occurs can't actually access that area. Norwood has been working for a significant time to try to figure out how to fund this project, get this project moving forward. And this grant has a lot of them the opportunity to be able to go ahead and move forward with this project now, which is great, a great correspondence between us and Norwood. And lovely today, we have Norwood Mayor Bill Brown here today and Noah Powers III, the Safety Service Director. I'd like to invite them up to let them share anything about the project that I missed.
Please. Welcome, Mayor.
Mayor Victor Schneider.
Hi, Mayor.
A different mayor, but I'm Mayor Victor Schneider, and this is our Safety Service Director, Noah, Noah Powers. And we have been working on this for years and years. 20 years ago, this was overland flooding that was plaguing our community. It was, I would say, at one point, it was something that was exacerbated by, by basically the, the idea that we could disconnect our sanitary and our stormwater lines by taking everybody's downspout out of the ground and putting, running it to the street. And this caused major problems. And now we have other problems with the storms that come through. So this overland flooding has happened for years and years and years. We have found a solution, we think a very logical solution, to move this retention, which is a retain, what happens is a large retention basin, which is normal for, you know, new construction areas. But this retention basin is right in the middle of people's homes and in the middle of the street and the middle of the community. So this is a area that has needed work in Hamilton County for many, many years. And we really appreciate, you know, moving forward with this. We've been looking for a way to make this happen. And hopefully with your support, help and support, we can, we can move on from there. I don't know if Noah, you have anything to say, awesome to that?
Uh-oh. You have, I said hello. No, just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Thank you. We don't want to play with the point. We would appreciate any help. And we'd like to move forward with the project as quickly as we can to eliminate it. So.
Gotcha. Okay, I'll open it up. Vice President Treehouse?
Thank you. I, I remember when we had a big storm event, I was a state representative representing Norwood. And I remember the cars floating in the streets and it was just horrible. So very familiar with the flooding issues out there. I remember calling Nick Crossley before I even knew who he was and saying, hey, what are you all doing for Norwood? I mean, there's some real problems out there. So I'm happy to support this. We have so many stormwater issues in this community. And I know that all of us are meeting with Holly and Todd related to how we approach stormwater issues more broadly and how we get a little more proactive. It's, it's just so expensive, as, as evidenced here with the 1.3 price tag. It is so expensive to correct some of these issues, but it's really important for the communities that suffer from this rainfall after rainfall. So more to come on this one related to stormwater, I hope, as we try to understand what our role is in trying to prevent some of these, you know, significant events when we have a lot of rainfall because it just keeps on coming. And it's certainly not getting any better. So really happy that we're moving forward with this one for Norwood.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas?
Just had a question about the money flow. This, this was a grant?
Yes.
And so how did that work? We, we wrote it? They wrote it? We went in together? How did that happen?
So we issued. So we issued a grant process, through that grant process, and they had to complete an application along with required documentation to send back to us. Once we got those, we ended up getting 13 applications. We were able to work with 11 jurisdictions. All 11 were fully funded for their request that we were able to get out of that. And then now we're in the process of just completing their contracts to move forward. Absolutely.
I'd like to have one word from Noah. Noah has one.
The city's buying.
Yeah.
He's the guy working me the whole time.
Oh, oh, no, I know better. Yeah, I know better. Yeah.
That is true. So I will say, for the, the city's part, we are putting forward $800,000 for this project. So there's a lot of buy-in from the City of Norwood, and we're really excited to advance this. Appreciate you supporting.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, excited to move this forward. We had another stormwater one for Norwood. I thought we did something.
For me, this is the only Norwood one. We did have a couple. We did have three with Sims and a couple with other jurisdictions. But this was the only project that Norwood had brought forward with us.
Okay, good. Well, this one is very important. There is a major flooding problem there. I remember Krogers and the water just came out and people couldn't get to their cars. It went all the way up to their windows. And it was, it was a large recovery for a lot of homes and businesses in Norwood. Some didn't recover as well. So definitely happy to support this.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve item number, number, we, it's five. I had to go backwards.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Thanks for being here.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ludo, the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. So consent agenda, several items on this today. We took care of item number six and advancing that to the regular agenda. Item number seven is a resolution authorizing an amendment with our agreement with Cincinnati Development Fund to reallocate dollars to our affordable housing programs in the amount of $872,518. Item number eight is a budget, is Budget Adjustment 19. This is for various engineer projects, One Ohio, the One Ohio Grant allocations, the Healthy Aging Grant, a Coroner Grant, and the, and grants in Environmental Services in the amount of $291,138. Item number nine is a resolution authorizing the award of I T B 20-24. This is the execution of an agreement between the County and Shaakely Unit Service related to workers' compensation third-party administration services for $187,500. Item number 10 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2022 Chevrolet Blazer in the Clerk of Court's office at $26,995. Item number 11 is a resolution authorizing the award of an agreement with Browning Chapman LLC and the Board of County Commissioners for Juvenile Youth Center slab and masonry repairs for $169,577. Item 12 is the purchase of a 2024 Ford Bronco as a replacement in the Sheriff's Office for $13,135. Item 13 is a resolution of a then and now with county facilities for emergency repairs of a chiller at the Justice Center with train for $2,739. Item 14 is an agreement with Triton Services and the Board of County Commissioners on behalf of stadium parking for the Paycor Stadium Truck Dock Rack at $194,000. Item 15 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Village of North Bend on behalf of the County and the Solid Waste Management District. This is for recycling program at William Henry Harrison Riverfront Park for $10,290. Item 16 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a law enforcement liability insurance program in the Sheriff's Office for $137,663. Item 17 is a resolution authorizing a, one position to the table of organization in county facilities for groundskeeper and maintenance operations at the Hillcrest Facility for a total of $98,821. Item 18 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a property insurance program for Hamilton County properties at $1.371 million. And as I take a quick breath, Commissioners, there is a lot of J F S items. I'm just going to prepare myself here. So item 19 is an agreement with Bethany House for prevention services at $200,000. Item 20 is an agreement with Beach Acres Parenting Center for prevention services at $200,000. Item 21 is an agreement with the Children's Home Doing Business as Best Point for prevention services at $200,000. Item 22 is Amendment Number Three to the contract with Harbor for youth employment services at 2.143 million. Item 23 is Amendment Number Three with Talbert House for youth employment services at $3.72 million. Item 24 is a single source contract with Step Higher Inc., Nella's Place, for group home services at $385,000. Item 25 is a single source agreement with Kelly Youth Services for group home services at $100,000. Item 26 is renewal one to the single source agreement with S J O Kids Doing Business New Path for independent living services at $1.545 million. Item 27 is renewal number one with Angels Guarding Youth Services and the Board for Foster Care Services at $584,276. Item 28 is an agreement authorizing an agreement with the National Youth Advocate Program for adoptive and foster home study assessments and kinship assessment services at $120,000. Item 29 is Amendment Number One to the agreement with the Sheriff's Office and the Board for, and Job and Family Services for the serving of child support arrest warrants at $1.227 million. Item 30 is renewal number two to the original agreement with the Fly House and the Board for Group Home Services, $742,000. 31 is renewal number one with New Life Furniture and the Board for Furniture Bank and Distribution Services at $300,000. Item 32 is an agreement with the Prosecuting Attorney's Office for legal representation for children's services for E cases at $2.996 million. Item 33 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Princeton City School District and the Board on behalf of the, of Job and Family Services for Career Navigator Services at $1.005 million. Item 34 is an original, authorizing the single source agreement with the Rehabilitation Center Doing Business as Mill Creek McGee for residential treatment services at $620,500. 35 is an agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Cincinnati for prevention services at $200,000. And 36 is renewal number one of the original agreement with United Methodist Church, United Methodist Children's Home Family Services and the Board for Foster Care Services at $73,760. Item 37 is a request for authorization to travel at the county's expense. The engineer, 11 employees to Lebanon, Ohio. The engineer, 11 employees to Washington Courthouse, Ohio. The engineer, 1 employee to Raleigh, North Carolina. The coroner, 1 employee to Denver, Colorado. And the coroner, 1 employee to Daytona Beach, Florida. That is your consent agenda, Commissioners.
Okay, I'll open it up. Vice President Treehouse?
Just want to know who's going to Daytona Beach, Florida. No, I just have one question actually related to item number seven. Can you provide a little bit more information related to this amendment? This is the C D F amendment?
Certainly. I may defer to Assistant Administrator Chris Moon to walk us through. This is a result of a reallocation that was done with C D F. So I'll.
Sure. Yep, absolutely. Thank you. This, this reallocation was approved by the Board quite a few meetings ago to move money into. to move money into the Affordable Housing Line item. So the Board already allocated the, the funding to this line item. This is just an amendment to CDF's original contract to allow for that additional money to come in. It's just taken some time between when the Board allocated that to finalizing the amendment to the agreement with CDF.
Okay, great. Thank you. That was my only question.
Okay, Commissioner Dumas? Thank you. I was looking at the JFS items also, and I counted up eighteen of them. But we talk about our young people and how much we need to do for them and how many services they need. And this is just obvious that we don't just talk about it, but we allocated the money where it needs to go. And I was just wondering, is the fiscal year July one, July one, is that how it works? Is this, are these agreeing? It is?
That's a really good question. It's complicated with our funding sources, so the state is, is at the June-July fiscal year. And federal is obviously October or September. So it all depends on the funding source and how we, how we get the funding on those, on those contracts.
And I, I think my question was, for instance, the first one, the prevention one, we may see that come up again then. This is not the last time we see it, the two hundred thousand.
Correct. This is a, these are a set of contracts that we entered into at the end of last year with our levy dollars. And so we're starting to, these contracts are starting to come to fruition, and we're starting to sign these contracts for prevention. Yeah, thank you.
That's all you have. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve items seven through thirty-seven.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreyhouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. One thing I forgot to mention, just want to ask Mr. Ludo. I know he'll keep us informed. But there was an employee of the Clerk's Office that had a major incident in our garage that we own. And pretty traumatic, my understanding, was at gunpoint. And I think the car was taken, but Rob, thank God, the person is still alive. But we care about all of our employees with Hamilton County. And I just want to ask the Administrator, as he can get with the clerk folks or whatever, to come back to us with some safety, an enhanced safety plan for our employees who have to walk or parking and walking. Because we're, I just can't believe something like that would happen early in the morning. And I just want to send, you know, certainly our prayers. And I know that, and that employee has to be shaken up and everything. So just wanted to have the Administrator to try to get back with us. I know we have been working with the Deputy's Office of Security of this floor and other floors, but we need to definitely enhance our security plans and operations and maybe get back to the Board of what, what you have in mind.
Yeah, absolutely, Commissioners. Happy to do that. And I did this morning speak with the Clerk of Courts. Also spoke with the Sheriff's Office regarding this particular incident. They are working on that exactly for us and some plan enhancements and a strategy for enhancing the security of our employees in the county campus during those hours when they're going to be traversing to and from the parking garage. So I will definitely get back to you as to what those plans and upgrades would be.
I appreciate it, because cameras don't work anymore. That's after the crime. We trying to catch them, so they don't commit it. So we're learning a lot. So thank you for being on top of that. Appreciate it. Okay, I make a motion for us to go into executive session pursuant to Section one two one two two G two to discuss the acquisition of property with Roger Friedman. Yeah.
Second.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreyhouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.